Call the meeting to order. I invite you to join me in the invocation. Dear Lord, we come to you asking a healing prayer for our country. Grant us compassion for those less fortunate. Show us the way to make their lives less difficult and more fulfilling. Strengthen our schools, the teachers, and the students that need your intervention to find ways to improve the many issues that face our students daily. Guide them to know the comfort of your touch and healing hand. Be with our first responders and the families in Las Vegas as they cope with the events of last night. In a world of confusion, disagreement, and division, the only constant is the knowledge of your love for all of your children. Continue to hold us in your hands as we walk through life with the gifts you have given to us. In your holy name we pray. Amen. Before I go into special presentations, I think we have some special guests with us tonight. I see several members of the Boy Scouts who would like to come up and tell us what you're doing tonight and what you're here to achieve.
It's Troop 82 from the Lutheran Church. They don't all come at one time. Come on up to them.
Tell us your name and your troop number and...
I'm Benjamin Parsons. I'm from Troop 82. Tonight, we...well, we're working on a merit badge for...we're working on a merit badge. And today, while we're here, we can check off something that we've been trying to get. Citizenship of the World.
In the community, probably.
Well, that's about it, I guess.
All the Russian Scouts, stand up, tell us your name.
I love it.
My name is Jackson Shear. Ross Holes, Daniel Montanaz, Raymond Drew, Sacramento.
My name is Jason Minner. We are from Troop 82, responsible by the person in charge here. Like my friend, Mr. Parsons said, we are working towards citizenship in the community, which is one of the 13 required merit badges employees either earned or under equal.
Well, thank you very much for coming to see us tonight, and I hope you can stay with us the entire meeting. Thank you. I have a couple of special presentations tonight. First, let's call up Stephen Hartzell. This is a presentation from the North Carolina Road Scholar, where they attend classes and become experts in the field of their employment. First one is North Carolina Road Scholar. This certificate is hereby recognized as Stephen Hartzell, City of Albemarle, as having successfully completed the basic education program requirements for current road maintenance and management practices as set forth by the North Carolina Local Technical Assistance Program, Institute for Transportation Research and Education, North Carolina State University, this March the 7th. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you.
He may have the youngest attendee ever to come to a city council meeting back there with him. Is that not right? They have a baby baby back there that came for this event.
How old's the baby, Stephen? One week. Wow.
Yeah.
North Carolina Road Scholar. This certificate hereby recognizes Ross Holeshauser, City of Albemarle, as having successfully completed the basic education program requirements for the current road maintenance and management practices as set forth by the North Carolina Local Technical Assistance Program, Institute for Transportation Research and Education, North Carolina State University, March the 23rd, 2017. Ross is also going to stay with me because he has another award that I assume was a surprise to you, because it was me anyway. American Public Works Association, the North Carolina Chapter, NC Streets Division, 2017 Streets Manager of the Year. Presented to Ross Holeshauser, City of Albemarle, in recognition of significant contributions to the advancement of street management and operations, effective and innovative leadership and management contributions to the local community, the use of sustainable practices in daily operations, and exemplary customer service practices. Was presented in September in Hickory. Now, would you like to say something?
I really don't need a microphone. First of all, I was shocked and very surprised and humbled, because in a way, I don't feel deserving. And the reason is, I'm lucky to have a team of guys that pull together and do a lot of stuff around the city. We've been fortunate over the past year to accomplish a lot of goals that council set for us. Lucky to have good leadership and good management with Nina and Michael and Christine pushing us in that direction too, towards the vision of what we're doing not only in downtown with the citywide, implementing the policies that we established last year for the first time with good results so far. Going into our second year this year, we've established some E recycling events that was just held a couple of weeks ago, which was successful. Hopefully, we can have another one this year. The downtown streetscape plan came into place last year, and we knocked off a lot of checkmarks on the list there. So, this is exciting, and it's nice to have a group of people to work with that makes those visions come true and see it happen. So, I can't say all the credit, but it's definitely a group effort. Thank you.
Dana, if you would, tell us a little bit about the program and all.
Well, a candidate for this award must have 10 years of experience in management and/or maintenance of roadway system and rights away. And prior to working at the city, three-plus years, he worked in the private sector in road construction and utility installation. The APWA Awards Program acknowledges the individual contributions in the public works field and recognizes award recipients for their vision, passion, delivery of service to their communities. This year's selection committee committed Ross as being a distinguished example of a dedicated and professional public servant. I'm very excited because it's one of the top awards in the state, and it's the first for Albemarle, so I'm very pleased. And the chapter would like to endorse and submit Ross's nomination for a national award, which would be selected and presented at the 2018 PWX event in Kansas City.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Ross and Stephen. We appreciate all you do for us. Item number four, consular approval of the September 18th regular session minutes.
Luteal proof.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have three public hearings. The first one is an ordinance 1732 to rezone 711 Aquadale Road. I want to have staff to come up and introduce it first.
Mayor, council, affairs. This is a private map amendment for rezoning request for 711 Aquadale Road. Let's get to it real quick. All right, the applicant Carlton Brad Thompson. Ms. Thompson, he's right here. I'll let him talk if he wants to later on. He was the applicant. He applied in August, tax record 12, 2009. Property description, it's a single-family residence, size is about 18,350 square feet. The current zone is actually light industrial district, although oddly enough, the structure that's been there since the '70s has been single-family residential. Adjacent zoning is single-family, except for the south, which is zoned LID. The reason why Mr. Thompson came in here is it's privately sponsored text amendment. He would like to bring it actually in conformance with current zone, because right now, it is technically not in allowed use under LID, so if something were to happen to the structure, he would essentially not be allowed to rebuild. The property is serviced by the city and is not currently in the watershed or in the floodplain. Here's a picture of the parcel. As you can tell, all properties north of it are single-family residential. Properties to the west of it are single-family residential. There is a large manufacturing establishment there, but it's outside city limits. And then, here is the zone. It is actually zoned LID, as you can see. It's pretty unique. Not sure exactly why it was zoned LID, but it is zoned LID. And here's the future land use map. As you can tell on the future land use map, way down here, it's actually slated to be general residential. General residential classifications feature areas of low-density development with roads that are not well-connected and frequently terminate cul-de-sacs. Development considerations include environmental impacts, urban sprawl, road connectivity impact on adjoining neighbors, protection of natural features and vistas, and the availability of adequate infrastructure. In staff's opinion, the proposed single-family residential district is in alignment with general residential uses specified under the land use plan of 2028. And of course, they went to planning board last Tuesday, and they voted five to zero to recommend approval, along with their adopted consistency statement. Any questions at this time?
Have any questions of staff? Hearing none. This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Come on up, please. And you will. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Brad Thompson. I'm the owner. This is one of my rental properties, and I've come to find out, with it zoned light industrial, if I go to sell it, nobody can get financing on it, which is a big problem. So, that's my biggest concern.
Yeah, the way they started was Mr. Thompson was actually in the bank, and his banker called me, so I recommended they come in and get a rezoning, and here we are.
Council, have any questions of Mr. Thompson?
I just appreciate him coming to get it, to get it where it needs to be.
Council, enclosed public hearing. Anyone else care to speak for or against? All right, have a motion by Councilmember Townsend to close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Yes, that was with the adopted consistency statement, correct?
Well, that was just a closing.
Sorry.
Motion approved 1732 and the consistency statement.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Our second public hearing, number six. Public hearing for conditional use permit application, CUP 17005. Staff, if you will, introduce that.
Sure. This is a previous hearing that was done by David Chan a while back ago for what was then, under our ordinance, not conforming, unlimited electronic manual skill games. As we know, this is kind of in a UCH situation now because of the text amendment that happened in May again in August. So, but this was a conditional use in general highway business district at the time. In April, it was approved by council with six months provision for the conditional use, so it's actually coming up to its expiration. Would you like me to go through his responses specifically?
Council, do you have any questions of staff? You know what it is. I would like to hear any incidents or anything that's occurred since this started.
So, as you guys remember, in the six, in the way it was approved, there were, it was approved with conditions A through G posted here. We had some issues with it not necessarily being in compliance all the time. Issue number B was access. Electronic gaming terminals, computer machines, gaming machines shall be open and invisible from the front interior of the establishment at all times, while open for business and while patrons are on the premises. Electronic gaming operations shall be open for direct, unobstructed access by police officers, fire department personnel, emergency response personnel. Entrance doors shall remain unlocked at all times while patrons are on the premises. Police officers, fire department personnel, and emergency response personnel shall have direct access to the premises without requiring assistance from an employee, agent, or owner of the establishment. There was a period where this was actually not necessarily in compliance. There was kind of like a magnetic lock on the front door. Now, that was actually a bit of a concern for the fire marshal that led to him subsequently sending this letter here, in effect, pulling power from the business until it came into compliance. This was Fire Marshal Michael Rourke for the county at the time. He's city fire marshal now. He could not make it tonight, but this was his letter that he sent June 16th, 2017, too. Of course, Michael Leonis from Public Utilities to ask to be pulled. In it, he cited the section where it said, you know, door operations, sections of egress doors shall be readily open for egress side without the use of a key or special. It said, "Currently, the building has an electronic lock located on the main entrance egress door. This lock, once enabled, locks the door from the main office in the rear of the building. While the fire code does allow for access-controlled locks in certain frequencies, this device has not been submitted for approval prior to installation. As such, I have no way of knowing if the device meets the requirements of the fire code. During the inspection, I asked the business manager to lock the door from the rear office to test the door operation. The electronic door lock does have a motion sensor, which is used to unlock the door from the egress side. However, upon field testing the unit, any person trying to egress who does not approach the door straight ahead will be unable to exit the building as the motion sensor does not activate for anyone who approaches the exit from the side. This is an unacceptable condition where occupants could potentially be trapped inside of a building with no means of egress. This condition alone presents an imminent threat to the general health, safety, and welfare of the public." And this essentially led to, I'm asking to pull the power. Now, for our uses in terms of land use, that was at the time when it was installed, was in violation of section of the condition B that you guys implemented. And I can go on a little bit more. They also add some issues with E. Maximum number, maximum number of terminal, computer machines, gaming stations with an electronic gaming establishment is 20. For a while, they had 23 units. They stated that three of them were turned off and non-operable, but still, it just says maximum number 20 here, so I'm interpreting that to mean actual physical presence of 20 or more. And the stipulation F, which is kind of a minor thing, was gaming establishments shall prominently post the rules of a sweepstakes game. They didn't really post rules too often. I'm assuming maybe the rules are actually on when they log on, because they're all computer terminals. I'm not familiar too much with that aspect of it. Let's see if I can pull some pictures real quick. Wow. Okay. There you go. This was it in 4:28 gradually. We went and did a group inspection at 6:15. So, it actually, as you can see, their business hours were correct in terms of that that we had. We asked that they, you know, open later on on the Sundays. They did that, but this was identified, and this was again, the reason why the fire chief pulled it, was the accessibility concern. This is just to illustrate the number of units. There are a number of units. As you can also tell here, there's this partition wall going back to that. And the condition, one of them was that we're allowed to see all gaming units as soon as we enter from the main door. So, scrolling down, this one was actually hidden from sight, which again, is an issue in terms of section E of the conditions. But this was all, you know, identified in 6:15, 2017. They were unrelated to this. They were in violation of building and fire code as well, as you saw, and that was why it got pulled for fire permit. So, they actually, you know, submitted plans and everything, and went through the formal process of meeting building and fire code, and they opened back up again later in late August. Early September, I actually visited again. It looked like this from the exterior, and then this was me visiting it again on the 25th. Now, it is important to note that, and this is a little shaky, but it is correct. The numbers here did change to just 20 units. Again, I saw this out there. It said, "Please ring bell." Now, I can't say both times. I was there, the, it was, I did have unobstructed access, so there was no way of me keying in or not, but I find it interesting that it has a different sign now that says, "Please ring bell." Additionally, when it was actually going through the plans review process for its interior renovations for building and fire code, in it, it also included on the plan showing that they were actually going to fix the lock. And then, we approved the plans, but it said over here, "Planning Development Services, zoning, unobstructed access to premises is required per the order issued in the conditional use permit 17-001." So, again, they had it in their, in their plan submitted to building and fire code for the interior layout, that they were going to have an entry point that would be able to lock and unlock. And we specified here that we will approve the plans bar that. It was actually modified. David Harrington, if you remember him, he was the contractor for this. He actually came to my office, and I told him, you know, that's not allowed under the condition, so he struck that out on the plans. And I just made sure when I approved it to mention that again over here. This is usually what we send out to individuals whenever we are done with the development process for plans review, indicating that it's okay for them to move forward with purchasing a building permit. We'll come into city again in coordination from them purchasing building permits. Sorry.
Just a question.
Sure.
David Harrington, who used to be the inspector?
Yeah.
Was the contractor?
Yeah, he was, he retired in May, and then, you know, he went into private business for himself, so.
And you had to tell him that something wasn't correct.
Right. On the plans, right, on the plans review, there is, for work for the interior renovations to meet building and fire code, again, in there, it said, you know, we were, they were going to correct the issue that the firefighter had, and I said, "Technically, that's not allowed per the zoning requirement and the conditional use," so he actually struck it out in front of me on that plan, and then I said, "Okay, now the plan, I can move forward with approving it." So.
Clarification.
Sure.
When they was found in fire code violation back in June?
Okay.
Was it my understanding that they stayed closed down till August before they opened back up?
Yeah, they stayed closed down. They, they had to do whatever they had to do in order to get power turned back on, which was to fix building and fire code violations. So, they were closed for that interim period of time.
Okay.
So, it took two months, basically. Two months, they were out of business.
Right.
Police chief, would you come up and tell us what the call history is on the location?
In the last six months, we've had a few alarm activations going in and out, and two calls for improper parking, but other than that, we haven't had any calls at this location.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone else care to speak for or against?
It's up to you. Mr. Chan is here.
Yes, please come up.
If you can go ahead and swear him in, that would be cool, too, so.
I need a...
I got it right here.
Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. You swear that testimony you're about to give be the truth to help God.
Hi, I'm David Chan. I'm the operator of Good Luck Albemarle. Whatever Nasser has said previously is true.
I can't hear you.
Will you address the issues that staff just brought up and why they occurred?
Yeah, so, we went through, and we shut down for two months to correct everything, and we made sure to hire a local contractor, Mr. Harrington, because we thought that he knew what to do, so, and we went ahead and corrected all the violations.
Okay. Council, have any further questions for Mr. Chan?
I want to know how, how is it that, Ashley, you was the first one that we approved the conditional use for on this ordinance? And we made the stipulations very clear that night you was at council meeting. How is it that there was a mistake between 20 machines and 23?
I mean, we turned them off. We counted exactly what we had on, and we just turned them off. That was, that's the honest truth. And some of the machines had broken, so. And right now, we're running 17 or 18. Just stay under the 20, just to make sure.
Council, have any further questions?
And mine starts off with a statement, and then, as a follow-up to Mr. Townsend. We were very specific that night, and with the drawings that you brought in, you knew when you left what was expected of you before you opened, but went right and did not follow those drawings, as I understand it. Is that correct?
Yes, but like I said, the machines, some of them worked and some of them didn't. We just had them laid out.
I'm not specifically talking about the number of machines. I'm talking about those...
We had 23 physical machines there, and I knew that we had, we were supposed to have 20.
And the issue of the partition, and the issue of the door lock, and those kinds of things?
The buzzer is kind of for us for security at night, but we took it off already. It's not on at all. It's just swing open and come in.
Doorbell still there?
Doorbell's still there. They can choose to ring it or not. I mean, most of my customers, they just open the door. But doorbell's kind of for us to know that someone's coming in.
Further questions, council?
So, so right now, sir, today, how many machines do you have in the facility?
17, I think 18 as of today. We have less than 20, though.
Is that running, or is that in the facility?
In the facility, period, physically there.
Is it 17, or is it 18?
I mean, 18, 18, I'm going to say 18.
How often are you in the facility during an average week?
Monday, Tuesday, and then Friday, Saturday. Four days a week.
Who's there when you're not?
I have a manager locally.
Is he a local person, or?
Yes, ma'am, local.
Council, have any further questions? Anyone else care to speak for or against?
Move the public hearing be closed.
Second by Councilmember Hall, closed public hearing. Second by Councilmember Townsend. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Council, I think we need to go through the findings of fact again. Number one, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located, were proposed, and developed according to the plan as submitted and provided.
I'm actually going to change to show you what the applicant's response was in the staff analysis. But again, it's up to you guys to vote. Just to go back to the orders, they're all required to be recorded as a, into the register of deeds as a conditional use permit, so.
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate to, to do this another six months?
Council can put any conditions you want on it, yes, sir.
Because with the way, way that worked out, I don't really feel comfortable. I don't feel assured that it's going to be that way from now on.
If council's going to approve it, I would say you probably want to get another limit.
Okay. Yeah, you could do it three months or a year, so, or any time.
But where we are right now, is that finding the facts, correct?
We're finding facts, we're on the first one.
We have to rule on each one?
We have to move on each one of them. I'll read it again. "The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located, were proposed, and developed according to the plan as submitted and provided."
Well, I think they've done that. I move that that be approved.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett.
Hold on a second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion?
Clarification.
Yes, sir.
Now, I see where it say, "Were proposed and developed according to the plan," but I just want to get clarification that although the plan looks good to us, his actions don't, you know, so is that deviated somewhere else in another finding of facts?
That's something you could take into account in your vote.
On this particular finding of fact?
Right, on the finding, yeah, because this is addressing the issue of public safety. It's important to note that, yeah, these are, you guys stipulate the conditions, so again, things to consider when voting.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Raise your hands, please. Three. Those opposed? Number two, the use meets all required conditions and specifications.
I think what, if we're looking at now, from what I heard, everything's been fixed. So I think it depends on how you read these. Does it meet all the required conditions and specifications now? I would think it does, but it did not. So I think it depends on how you interpret that.
As of this date now, so everything is in accordance with the required conditions and specifications?
To the best, right, to the best of my knowledge, they got power turned back on. They had to come in compliance with both building and fire code, which was the ones that initiated the violations. They have not received their CO yet, but they were approved in terms of fire and, and building permit. It's just a matter, I think, for the building inspector to give them their CO back again. So technically, they are in compliance of building and fire code now.
And operating on a temporary CO.
And operating on temporary CO, yeah.
Again, I go back to the original. And Nasser, for this one, since it's a six-month conditional, do we go back to the original application?
In terms of...
In terms of answering the...
The findings of fact, yeah, you can. He actually answered them again. I, I think when you guys are, when you guys think about whether or not you want to give them the conditional use, that, you know, the question is, is you could bring in the issue of, were the previous conditions okay or were they not okay? Some of these questions, really on, on these findings of fact, they're, they're kind of unique, you know, it depends, like I said, this, it's an evidentiary hearing, so they're, the applicant, the onus is on them to present all the evidence. The theory is assumed at this point, you know, he got, this is his second time around coming for, for conditional use, in which case he was granted because he had at the time met these four conditions in theory. But again, something to factor in is now that you've had the six-month basis, to weigh in on if he met the conditions that you had initially given him. So you could theoretically approve these four findings and then say, well, we have condition, we have issues with the fact that you didn't meet the previous conditions for X period of time. So I think that, that's one way you could look at it, too. Yeah, so...
But back to story, may I?
Sure.
The burden of proof?
Is always on the applicant.
Is on the applicant.
Right.
It's on the petitioner.
Right, and then if he establishes enough sufficient substantial evidence, then the burden of proof turns to whoever is against the applicant.
Gotcha. We're on number two.
I'll get it on the floor. I move it.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett.
I'll second.
Second, by Councilmember Whitely. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands, please. Four. Those opposed? Four, three. Number three, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively, that the use be a public necessity.
I move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Five. Those opposed? Number four, the proposed use is in harmony with the adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And those opposed? Six, one. Mr. Beaver?
Yes.
My understanding is, since it did, number one, did not pass, I do not call for a vote now because it has essentially been denied.
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Chan, counsel has turned down your, your conditional use permit. You are now required to close.
Yeah, that's, that's true, but I'll, I'll talk to you more. I gotta send you a formal...
Number seven, public hearing, to receive input on potential golf cart regulations. Police chief will come up and talk about the regulation counsel has previously discussed.
Mayor, members of council, Mr. Ferris. Council has discussed the possibility of a golf cart ordinance for the last couple of meetings. And we've been working on it, and here are the regulations that we've been trying to put together and put in an ordinance. Number one, they should have a valid driver's license to operate a golf cart. They should be eighteen years old at a minimum. The golf cart must have a rearview mirror, a horn, and a slow-moving vehicle emblem on the rear of it. It must have proof of insurance. It can only be operated during daylight hours and used on roads to have thirty-five mile an hour or less speed limit. You can cross a road with a higher speed limit at an intersection. Must have an annual inspection by the police department, and you can only have one person per seat. No more people than the golf cart is designed to carry. And have a reasonable annual fee.
Counsel, have any questions to the chief?
That one person per seat? Have two people normally on a golf cart seat?
I would suggest that that'd be, that's a one person, no more people than a golf cart is designed to carry.
Some of them have a backseat to which you can sit.
Well, and back to...
Counsel, back to the question I asked last time. Are you gonna allow a child between two adults in the front seat?
And I was, that's what I was about to ask. And if there's a way we can do that, I think it needs to be, because there's no way, well, I don't believe there would be a way that an adult would come, be on golf cart with even a six or seven-year-old, just the two of them, unless that, unless somebody else was there, too, to be on the side. So I'm thinking, is there a way to do that, to allow for a child to be on there as well in the middle? But I'm not sure how to word that.
Counsel wishes it to be that way. We can always get it worded when we bring the ordinance back.
That's how I, that's how I want it.
Would it fall under the same guidelines that the state has for car seats and booster seats and the age limit of age or whatever the poundage is?
That would be up to your requirement, whatever you placed in there. Most of the other ordinance I've seen, none of them have that, that tied on to it.
I would say no, because they don't have, have seatbelts.
Seatbelt to put it in.
There's no way to fasten them in.
I'm gonna break it off.
Counsel, have any further questions?
Did we decide the fee, I know he was gonna, we were gonna talk about?
I've checked with several of the other cities that allow golf carts. Most of them are twenty to twenty-five dollars. There's one that's fifty. I would suggest around twenty dollars a year.
That, and we ask you during your findings to determine that whatever that fee would be, that it would, would pay for the cost of the inspection, your time, and that kind of thing to inspect them, and that would do that? Is that a...
I think so. It would depend on how many we have, because we've got a, you've got to purchase the registration stickers.
Right.
That's gonna be an expense, and then, but it, I would think twenty dollars would be fair.
Counsel, have any further questions to the chief?
Just, just one you'd mentioned, I think, before, that part of fifty-two is thirty-five miles an hour.
That is correct. And it would, I would make the recommendation that you put a specific line in ordinance to say they're not allowed on fifty-two only to cross straight across.
Correct.
Just a lot of traffic.
In that case, just to be safe, probably shoot at fifty, fifty-two and twenty-four, twenty-seven, because we don't know what the speed's gonna be on the new section of twenty-four, twenty-seven when they complete it.
Yeah.
Both in there, if that's what counsel desires to do.
There shouldn't be.
This is a public hearing. Anyone care to speak for or against?
My only concern relates to senior citizens who possibly no longer have a valid driver's license, but would like to be able to get to the grocery store. So I would, I have no problem with saying eighteen, but I do have a problem with limiting to a valid driver's license. Because you take somebody like my mom, you know, she doesn't drive everywhere anymore, but it would certainly help her, and she doesn't live here, but, you know, but somebody like her to be able to take it to church or take it to the grocery store instead of having to try to depend on somebody else.
And that could be a stipulation, too, as, could it not be for, I mean, could we not put a stipulation on there that if, if it were, I mean...
I would say you'd be better off either required round license or not required round license.
I think you're right.
If you want to allow that, you need to remove the requirement for driving.
What was that, Martha?
I mean, if you lose it for a DUI.
Right.
I mean, you should not be able to drive a golf cart. I think that's what we're saying. You need to have a valid driver's license to drive it, if you, or not.
Yeah. Totally counsel's decision.
I believe that stipulation.
Motor scooters all over town. Are we gonna have other people?
Anyone else cares to speak for or against? Come on up.
I'm Pat Bramlett. I did not prepare anything. I didn't really think I would speak tonight, but I am opposed to the approval of this ordinance. I think it's a safety issue. I think our police officers have more important things to deal with than dealing with golf carts. I think golf carts, for the most part, are an adult toy. I don't think they really need to be on our streets or in our downtown area or crossing highways. I just, I feel like it's a, it's a danger. I worry about the children who might, if you approve whatever with the children being on them. All of the people that, that I have talked with, and I'm surprised none of them are here tonight, were opposed to our doing this. It will slow down traffic, and I don't think traffic needs to be going fast, but if you get behind the golf cart, you know it's going to slow things down on our streets. And I just, I think that's an issue. I, I don't think it's a, I think it will present some problems that we don't have to deal with. And we have hills in our community, in areas where you have flats. Some of the other municipalities are in probably a better situation to do this. They don't have the traffic. They don't have the hills that we have to deal with. I just am opposed to it. I just don't think it's something that we need to get into.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak for or against?
Most in closed public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, closed public hearing. Second, by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Counsel, it's your decision now whether you wish to proceed with the drafting of an ordinance or decide at some later time. It's your decision.
I'm surprised nobody's here to speak for it. If, if there's nobody speaking for it, why are we even talking about it?
And I'm surprised that we don't have anybody really speaking against it. I mean, and I think it goes back to Dexter's comment at our last meeting.
What was that?
Dexter, and it was in the paper, Shannon did a great job on quoting him, that, was it Dexter? Oh, it might have been Bill. I don't know. Maybe it was Bill. One of the, yeah, one of the...
Same hair.
Somewhere down here. Might have been Bill.
That folks know that we're doing things and they won't come forward. This is their opportunity to speak either pro, either for or against something. You know, a lot of us were contacted, it was, it's been on, this is our third agenda that it's been on. And for folks who follow what's going on, the folks who read what's going on, they knew we were doing it. So, you know, it's folks' opportunity to speak both for something and against it. I guess it was one of the ball-headed guys, so it was Bill.
Well, I think, I think a lot of people feel like their public hearing is posting a comment, pro or con, on social media, you know, but this is what business is conducted.
Right.
I just don't see a whole lot of interest or demand either way.
Going back to your comment about Shannon quoting, she misquoted me entirely.
I'm, I still stand, I, I'm a proponent for change, you know. We got fight for coming downtown, you know. I, I believe that it'll change the dynamics, if nothing else, of visual perception in downtown Albemarle. You know, these professional students, they'll be more prone to hop on a golf cart, go from Ponyat Point or Five Point Public House to Second Street Sunnery's or to another retail store in downtown than hopping in a vehicle. You know, I'm, I would like to see how it work, and we can always go back and redo it if it don't work out well.
Floor is open, counsel.
I move that we, I move that we move forward in development of an ordinance.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to move forward with drafting a ordinance to bring up for counsel.
I second.
Second, by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Those opposed? Four, three. Mr. Ferris, if you will get a ordinance drawn with the attorney and bring it back before counsel.
We'll do it.
Number eight, announced allegations. Mr. Durwood Lewis CPA for Lewis and Lewis CPA to present the physical year sixteen, seventeen Albemarle ABC system audit.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Durham Lewis with Lewis and Lewis CPAs. I'm here to present the audit report for the Albemarle ABC Board. I would like to direct the council's attention to page two of the audit opinion. I'd like to read that for your review. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly, in all material respects, the financial statement of the City of Albemarle ABC Board as of June thirty, twenty seventeen and sixteen, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable, cash flows thereof for the years then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. That paragraph represents the fact that the ABC Board received an unqualified opinion, the highest opinion that a CPA firm can, can render in an audit. All the books and records were as they should be. We found no, no variances. If I could direct you to page seven, the statement of net position, those of us in the business world would call a balance sheet. It shows that the cash and cash equivalents on hand at year end was three hundred ninety-one thousand, one oh five. Inventories was two eighty-nine. Various other current assets for a total of seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven forty-four. Fixed assets, net of depreciation, were nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six thirty-seven. Current liabilities, which were all the payables of the store at year end, were a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-four. Net position of the board was a million, five forty-three, five fourteen. The next page is the statement of revenues, expenses and changes in net position, which is essentially the income statement of the board. Shows that sales for the year totaled three million, sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five, which was an increase of approximately two hundred thousand from the year before. Cost of liquor sold was two million, three fifty-seven, six ninety-five. Uh, excuse me, taxes were seven oh five, one seventy, which were taxes paid on sales. Cost of liquor sold was a million, five eighty-two, which gave us gross profit of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, one seventy-nine. After deducting our operating expenses, we ended up with a net profit before distributions of three hundred and forty-two thousand, of which we distributed twelve thousand, seven eighty-nine for law enforcement, seventeen thousand, nine oh five for alcohol education and rehab, and two hundred and forty-one thousand distribution to the city. The next section is notes to the financial statement, which is explanations of various items. If I could bring your attention to page thirteen, that's a summary of capital assets, property, plant and equipment. plant and equipment. Total assets, fixed assets owned by the board were a million twelve thousand six hundred and sixty seven, less depreciation for depreciated value of nine hundred and ninety nine thousand. I'd like to direct your attention to page nineteen, which shows the various distributions of income made by the board. For the year, two hundred and forty one thousand was distributed to the City of Albemarle. Total distributions from inception to date have been a million three hundred and ninety two thousand. The following page, page twenty, shows our distributions for alcohol and law enforcement. That's mandated by state statute to be five percent and seven percent respectively. Twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty nine was distributed for law enforcement, seventeen thousand nine oh five for alcohol education rehabilitation. The following page, page twenty one, shows our county bottle tax, which was paid to Stanley County of nine thousand five hundred and ninety seven. The next table shows a breakdown of the various other taxes, mixed beverage, excise and bottle Page twenty two shows a schedule of working capital and working capital requirements of the board. By statute, the minimum amount of working capital is ninety thousand three sixty two. The maximum allowed is five eighty seven three fifty, and the board actually had five hundred and forty three thousand four thirty two. Page twenty six shows a breakdown of the various store expenses by category for further analysis. Page twenty seven shows the various administrative expenses. Page twenty nine is a schedule showing the original budget, the budget as amended and the actual results, and the board was within budget in total in all categories. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. Yes, ma'am.
Back up to page twenty. It's all good, nothing bad. Just for the folks that are watching this or in here now, they just, it's good, it's just good information in my opinion. Page twenty, when it talks about the provision for alcohol education and rehab, and I may have to ask Ms. Cranford, was that through the prom, is that the prom promise kind of thing with the rec with, that the county does in all four schools or even Greystone is included? Do you do?
They did two schools and then did speakers.
At all, all the schools? Okay. That's the rehab. Now go back a page to page nineteen. And you give the, the general fund to the City of Albemarle from date, from inception to date. Give us what that inception was. About what year was that?
Two oh, two thousand one.
Is that right?
Two thousand one.
About seventeen years.
So seventeen years, the city has made almost one point four million dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just wanted that to come out.
Stay thirsty, my friend.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, sir.
Would the chairman of the board care to say anything?
Not much I can say. I've done an outstanding job.
Chairman, you would like to say anything?
I...
Come on up if you, come on up, come on up.
I would just like to say that I'm, I'm very proud of, of how our ABC system works. We continue to try to improve things. And the only concern I have is that I'm, the Highway twenty four twenty seven widening project concerns me. We've had increases in sales for the last numerous years, and I'm just concerned, and they're saying in two years' time that the project will start, and I'm sure that will affect our sales. And when I've talked to people that have come to look at the property, I don't know that there'll be an access to turn into from the river, which is, you know, a lot of our, our customers. So I do have a concern for that.
I would encourage you to be at Anderson Grove Church on the nineteenth at five thirty for the public input session.
October nineteenth.
It's October nineteenth, five thirty. They're gonna have the diagrams of the complete layout all the way to the river for everybody to ask questions and to see.
Okay, that's good to know.
Public will be from five thirty to seven thirty, I think.
Okay.
But I would encourage you to do that, maybe some of your board too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, your entire board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All the employees. Number nine, Ms. Kathy Faircloth, Piedmont Natural Gas to provide an update on the Piedmont Natural Gas projects in Albemarle.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. Mr. Ferris, thank you for having us again tonight. I'm Kathy Faircloth, Piedmont Natural Gas. This is Jimmy Bowen and Kevin Promise. We're the project managers in Indian Trail and Stanley County. We serve Union County and Stanley County. I'd like to say that we're finished tearing up your beautiful city, but, but we do have some good news. Some of the projects that we were doing have been completed. Our second and fourth street project that has been retired, you have all new pipe out there. They're removing the risers, all our, got new gas services on all of our customers out there. Section thirty five, which is from Leonard Street, Washington Waddell, Coggins, all that gas main has been replaced. We haven't retired the old main yet. Services have been ran, meters have been swapped over, and we're gonna retire that within the next couple of weeks. Third street replacement has been completed. We're switching the meters over on those customers, and that job will be hired and complete. Charter Street, it's the same way. We've got a couple risers we need to cut off, retire a little bit of main out there. That job will be complete. Section thirty, which is the Schenkel Road, it goes from Fifth Street down Montgomery. That new main was gassed up last week and in the process of running services out there now, so it's gonna be a little inconvenience for running the new services, and then we'll retire that one. Then next year, this one's short, Jimmy.
Next year, our replacement project will be Ross Drive, which is US fifty two south from about Duck Road all the way up to the pool supply place right there, twenty four and twenty seven on South Second Street. And, and of course, up Ross Drive and up South Hill and Boyett. There'll be sixty four replacement services out there as well. Our issue out there is we have a, a station sitting in front of Rock Creek, that there's no room there actually to, to rebuild the station and upgrade it. So we're gonna put distribution pipe in and remove all of the above-ground farm taps and stuff in that area, so all of that, those ice hores will be gone. You won't, you won't see them anymore. The next one is Kevin Thomas.
Kevin's new to our area too. He came from Charlotte, and he's working on a big project in Albemarle, so we, we have to be gentle with him, but it's gonna be a big one. That's it. Go ahead.
Counsel, I'm, again, I'm Kevin Thomas. I'm, I have, the project that I have up here, there are two. The biggest project I have is on Highway fifty two, beginning at Prospect Church Road, extending to Second Street. And that project is to replace, and, and Piedmont's made a commitment to reinvest in the infrastructure of the City of Albemarle with this line to upgrade everything along fifty two to all the businesses, make a much safer operating system, much more updated, reliable working system than we have now, make it more accessible. And so right now, we're in the process of purchasing easements along Highway fifty two to install our new line. And we're gonna upgrade Hamilton Street to Otten Avenue, Otten Avenue from Hamilton Street to McCurdy Avenue, Snug Street to Biltmore, to the J.T. Russell Plant, down off, off of Snugs, and down Linway to the International Automotive Plant. Piedmont has plans to, again, supply International Automotive Corporation with a major account, what we call a major account service, where we supply them with a large volume of gas, and they're actually, we're investing in that infrastructure so they can expand even more. So that's a part of this project, supplying more gas to meet the needs of, of what's growing here in Albemarle. And again, this project will involve, you know, purchasing easements, so we have a place to lay our line that's outside of Highway fifty two, so we no longer have to worry about obstructing fifty two or slowing down traffic. What this project does is enable us to access our lines and supply customers from either side of the road without having to bore across the road to serve a customer. We do have to, with this project, we will have to extend across the road, but we're, instead of doing it every time, we're gonna do it three times and run mains on each side of the road that makes it completely accessible to anybody that wishes the talent to it, which makes it much more available to customers. You don't have to shut down your traffic as much. But I looked to start this project in January of twenty eighteen. I have a hard need date to be completed with that project of March fifteenth of twenty nineteen to re, to do all that. I met with, just met with, trying to make sure I make this as good, easy as possible as I can on your residence. I met with Jeff Burleson with NCDOT. He went over what he was gonna require for me, what he was gonna be paying close attention to. So we have traffic control measures and everything that we're gonna need planned out. I'm trying to plan way ahead so it goes as smoothly as possible. The second project I have, I'm not sure if you guys, it's, runs from Yadkin Brick Road up off seven forty, down past the prison and the airport. Again, that line, just, just another way Piedmont's trying to upgrade the infrastructure in Albemarle to supply, you know, the needs of the city, the needs of everybody here and allowing for future growth. And if you've got questions about, I don't have a print for that second project I spoke of, but if you wanna look on pages twelve through eighteen, from what Jimmy handed you guys, that has all the play-by-play of, of that first project I spoke of, which is, which is the larger of the two.
Kathy, when you finish all of this, will you have basically changed everything in the city?
Just about.
Just about.
Yes, or everything. All of the... This, this pipe was put in in, what, nineteen fifty nine?
Fifty nine.
Nineteen sixty. So we're just replacing it with this piece of wire.
I, I guess I have a crazy question, Mayor. Is Mark Donham in here?
He's back there.
Okay. And I, I guess I want to say it to you, but I want Mark to hear this. We have a corporate center that we have, that we have, or are getting, we bought the land and we're about to start work on, on fifty two south. Is that Ross Drive, would that be headed down toward that area?
I'm not sure exactly where you're talking about.
Ross Drive, Ross Drive would stop probably about six, seven hundred foot before you'd get to this, this property. But you have a line going down fifty two already, so...
But is it a new, is it one of these new lines? Is it something, I'm just thinking if they're here doing it, and this is, I mean, think...
Regulation station, white fire engines.
Okay.
There, there's actually a map on what I gave you that'll show you.
Right.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly where that's gonna be at on fifty two, but from Ross Drive, coming back this way, there's a two thousand foot main extension.
It's actually at the south end, isn't Ross Drive a big circle?
It is.
Okay. It's at the south end of Ross Drive where the Lutheran home is Trinity Place.
Yeah, that, that whole intersection would be covered with gas, so...
Yeah, you have to...
I don't think it's gonna be an issue for you to get to it. It's just a matter of us getting the road built, and then you can, can put it in, probably while the road's being built too. Counsel, have any questions?
I'd just like to say I appreciate what you're doing, and this is making an investment in our town, in our community, and yes, it's unsightly, and yes, people don't understand what's going on, why they have holes here, holes there, and not always seeing the big picture of things, and it's, it's not an easy process to do. If it was, everybody would be in the gas business, I'm sure, and laying pipe. But thank you for what you're doing. We appreciate it.
We appreciate working with you. We have a, a good relationship with the City of Albemarle. We, we can keep it that way.
In spite of the fact that you had to dig up my sidewalk four or five times in the process.
They hadn't dug at my house.
Third street.
They got all the, they got all the bad spots in the road.
We'll get to you.
I hadn't seen me on this list, though.
Ross, are you coordinating with them or discussing with them as you're getting ready to do your new paving so we won't be cutting up a road that we just got through paving? Have y'all had any, have any discussions on that?
Not in our view, because we, we still have to come back to counsel before we talk about the listed streets.
Okay.
It will be hard for us to do it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Number ten, Central United Methodist Church to request the use of the city hall parking lot in conjunction with the twenty eighth annual community Christmas dinner.
It's not, it's not Tom, it's Steve Sarat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and counsel. My name is Steve Sarat, and I'm here representing Central United Methodist Church, and I could talk before I got up. Excuse me. Your neighbor to the north. The matter is the annual Christmas dinner, and where the host church this year and will be next year. And for several years now, we have gotten obtained a refrigerated truck to keep the meats that are, that are prepared, particularly in any perishables, in this cool truck. Because of, of the limitations we have with our property, it would really be advantageous to us if we could park a truck out here on Saturday, Sunday and Monday, twenty third, fourth and fifth, to, to that end. And after that, we will get it out of your way if it should be approved.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I need to be the lead.
Oh.
Just to be safe, we will.
You know, that's gotta know.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to excuse. Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Now vote on original motion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Come eat with us on Christmas Day.
Come work.
Number eleven, Ms. Allenworth Lambert, Director for Communications, North Carolina Normal.
Good evening, Mayor Michael, and city leaders. How are you?
Great, thank you.
The reason why I came today is I want to talk about a taboo subject, but it's something that... Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. It's a controversial subject and a little bit taboo, but it's medical cannabis. Last year, October two thousand and sixteen, my father was diagnosed with stage four mouth cancer, and he had to remove his jaw and most of his tongue. I went to get him medical cannabis because I knew that there were several organizations that said that the cannabinoids would save his life, and whenever I went to get it for him, it wasn't available. In two thousand and fifteen, I had a friend, George Haney, who passed away with cancer, and he was given a cannabinoid synthetic, but it didn't do anything to combat the cancer, and it didn't even benefit him. My husband's mother in two thousand and eleven, Laura Hathcock, passed away with cancer. Had she had been given access to a plant that could be ingested wholly and holistically, she may have lived, and she may have had a better quality of life. Excuse my tears. I'm not asking that we have anyone, I'm not asking that we have a system where people can get their hands on it, especially children. I would never endorse a child to take medical cannabis unless it was to save their life. I don't wish to push my views on other people, but I wish for us to be heard and an action to be made. I'm asking that you please have compassion on the patients of Albemarle in North Carolina and work with me and allow me to try to educate you and the patients and to see what we can do about saving lives. If you would work with me and do this, I would be so grateful.
Thank you, counsel, is not, if I understand, Ms. Lambert is not asking you... Thank you, Council is not, if I'm understanding, Ms. Lambert is not asking you to take any action tonight, but in your agenda, we've added a lot of information that she provided for us. I would encourage you to take some time to read that, and then I will make a decision at some future point.
Okay. And I've also put a resolution in front of you, Mayor Michael. Ms. Bowers has been so compassionate and so empathetic. I appreciate our city manager so much. And there is a resolution, but I would like for it to be, not today, but as we grow a relationship and we learn from each other, I would like for that resolution to be signed.
Counsel, any questions?
I just would ask, Ms. Lambert, where did, what is your address, where you live?
1012 North 6th Street, Alamoor, North Carolina, 28001.
1012 North 6th Street, yes ma'am.
Do we have authority to act on this in any way?
No. What this will do is it will show the lawmakers in Raleigh that there are more elected officials in North Carolina who have compassion and who support it. It won't make a decision, but anything that we can have on record with the organization surely helps.
I'm wondering, one of the major issues that's sort of popular right now is opioid use.
Yes.
And, and is it possible that this might develop into the same kind of thing with opioids where it's way over, over prescribed? And it becomes then the problem that, that we're afraid of now, just like opioids?
Well, some of the education that I have passed along to you, it's not addictive in any way. There are some people who claim to have a mental addiction to it, but that could be the same way if you think that you need a piece of gum all the time or something as if. But no, I'm asking for a very safe and regulated system to be implemented so that access to medicines can happen. And I do not think that, I actually think it would help our opioid crisis.
Are there any other communities in the state that have...
Asheville, North Carolina.
Asheville?
Yes.
Any others?
No, you would be the second.
Counsel, have any further questions?
And I do apologize for my tears. Aye.
No apologies necessary. Thank you. And Counsel, we'll take some time to review what you give us tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Your municipal calendar is in your agenda. Anyone have any questions?
Mayor, just an addition. I think the city luncheon is going to be on Wednesday, December 13th. I didn't see that in the, on the calendar. Is that correct?
It is.
Okay.
Well, later, we talk about it later, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm just on this one.
When's the, I know I probably got this, the Charlotte...
November, November 15th. Hold on, November 15th through the 18th.
Eighteenth, I think.
November 15th through 18th.
Further questions? Number 13, new business, consider the preliminary approval of the reserve apartments. Have staff come up and introduce this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. This is what we have in the ordinance in multifamily, our R8A district, which is what this property is in. It does require that Planning Board and Council approve of multifamily properties over eight units. Also that a traffic impact analysis be included there as well. So essentially, this is kind of an administrative approval by Council where you need to look at what's in there, look at the impacts. I can only, really only think of some extreme circumstances where, you know, the, the traffic impact and such is going to make something just really not work, or there's some environmental constraints, something like that. Apart from that, this would be similar to a, kind of a subdivision administrative approval that you do. We do have, I'll give you a little kind of synopsis of staff's findings on this. Again, this isn't a CUP, it's not a, any other type of approval. We do need some kind of motion from y'all tonight if you do want to approve it, but we don't have any other kind of order or anything like that. It needs to be done.
But a site plan approval, correct?
It's a site plan approval, that's right. Preliminary approval is what I would consider this. The applicant is Southern Properties and Development LLC, and Joey Russell is here tonight representing them. He'll be available if you want to ask any questions of him. Let me pull this up here real quick. Okay, so this is the preliminary site plan that was submitted to us about a month ago. So from Planning and Development Services, I'll give you a quick rundown of typically what we would do on a, on a development review for something like this, even though this is a little bit preliminary and some of these are a little bit early to determine. The layout and the proposed units do meet all density and dimension requirements of R8A. Up to 109 units would be allowed in, on this property. What is proposed is 80. The rough calculations of preliminary site plans show a little bit more than three developed acres in the watershed. We'll need to see those exact numbers, but I don't think that that's going to be a problem right now in terms of the watershed development. They may need to apply for the 1070 development allowance if, if that turns out to be required. Open space recreation area requirements in the subdivision ordinance appear to be met. We do need to see the exact acreage figures on those final plans. In accordance with our ordinance, proposed Woodhaven Street extension improvements and right-of-way dedication towards Barnard will be required, or should I say, are recommended to be required as shown on the drawing the staff submitted to you. This would probably require adjusting the orientation of the first entrance. Staff also recommends that a second entrance point be required per ordinance. And landscaping, sidewalk, signage, all of the design aspects shall be included in the detailed development plans for approval by staff. Excuse me. The Fire Marshal said that a secondary access point would be recommended for fire apparatus turnaround. Of course, he'll also need to see a placement of fire hydrants on the updated plans, and the buildings may require sprinklers. Again, these are all typical things we'll get to later on. Utilities, some electrical upgrades will need to be made by the city. We have spoken with the Utilities Department, with Michael Leonis about this. Water lines may need, need to be extended at the appropriate size along new streets by developers. Sewer is available to the rear of the property. Tap fees and any required upgrades will be at the expense of the developer. Public works, streets, and I've spoken with Ross about this a little bit. It looks like this street extension will be, will probably wide enough. We'll figure out exactly what the width on that would be, if that's something that Counsel is in agreement on. I did speak with DOT about this. You've got a traffic impact analysis there. I realize it's a little bit hard to understand. There's a synopsis kind of at the beginning, first or, first or second page there. I did speak with Mark Morgan. He has no problems with the numbers that are shown. I think originally it was proposed to be 70, 76 units instead of 80. This was done two years ago, but I don't, from the numbers that are given there, I don't expect that four, four units would have much impact at all on the roads. And they also supported staff's suggestions in terms of improved street access and connectivity in the area there. Let me, if I can pull up real quick. So this is entirely, this is what, this, we created this overlay for you to see exactly how the apartments fit into the overall area. And staff did this kind of real quick sketch on here just to show you kind of what we were, what we propose in terms of road improvements there. Again, a lot of the items I mentioned to you are things that staff would approve administratively. Things like roads and sidewalks, though, are in the ordinance and allow for Planning Board and Council to, to make some adjustments as needed on those, and that's primarily what we're requesting from you tonight. Planning Board suggested by a 4-0 vote to go with staff's recommendations. And I'll, we've got a summary down here at the bottom. Major changes to layout or increases in developed area shall come back to Planning Board and Council. Essentially, this is the preliminary plan, as long as it sticks essentially to this, doesn't create any more density, doesn't develop any more of the site, I think we'll be okay. I mentioned density. Any increase should come back to Planning Board and Council. Staff to approve the appropriate design dimensions and location of new Woodhaven Road sections on city property and development access points. The developer to dedicate land for future city street connection to Barnard Road. Developer to construct sidewalks internally on, on one side of Woodhaven Road, I should say externally, on one side of Woodhaven Road. All other development aspects shall meet city code and be approved by the Planning Department. And if I could show you real quick, you could see on their plans, this has the old configuration of Woodhaven Road here, coming up with Heathwood. I believe it was 2000, 2012 maybe, that CDBG grant funds, and I think there's a city match perhaps that went into this to make the improvements right here on this section. This apartment was also required to make some changes to theirs, but I believe the intent of this was eventually to develop a road that would connect through here and would kind of open up development in the back there in the future. Similar to that, we would like to see this section of it completed right here where, you know, essentially each development is, is keeping up with the infrastructure, the needed infrastructure on the site and is doing their part. This right here, what we, and I've actually, I spoke with the manager of the cemetery down here, and he actually said that it probably wouldn't be a problem to either get a tiny little quarter acre sliver of land or a easement there in the future. It's not definite, but he said he didn't think it would be much of an issue. It would have to be approved, but to eventually connect through to Barnard Road, which is where a roundabout is going to go, and if you look at the rest of the site plans, this is really one of the only areas you're going to have access to, you know, all sides of the street and everything out on 2427 without having to pull U-turns and such. So pretty important that we get that access through there. It's nothing I'm proposing right now. I would just like to try to keep that available for in the future, similar to what we did with, with Woodhaven there.
I actually think we should continue bringing that road on out, like you've got the diagram. What, do you have any concerns with that? Okay, okay. That's consistently what we've done with the others, the other apartments we've approved.
Right.
Counsel, have any questions?
Just a question. So once again, show me where Woodhaven Court is right now.
Apartments.
The nursing facility. I want him to show us on here so we all can see it.
I don't, I don't know all the names, unfortunately. I'm sorry.
It's where you got your...
Right here? Okay, right here, yeah, yeah.
This is actually behind that.
Yeah, yeah. If you're coming in off of Bayden Road, it'd be off, behind that, yeah.
I just ask you to, you don't have to turn, but I've got open the memo from Joey Russell dated December 21st of 15. And on there, it's 72 dwellings, okay? And I would just say to Mr. Russell that sometimes Alamoor is spelled correctly and sometimes it's not on there. And just like I have always had a problem with Stanley spelled incorrectly, I have a problem with Alamoor spelled incorrectly. So, but on that one, it's 72. And it's interesting to me, and just for folks who may be here listening or somebody that listens to it on later, so why did we get something two years ago and we're just now hearing from it now? Just, I guess for anybody that might be listening or here, can you help me that or...
He can answer, Ross, but I mean, these are, this is a tax credit project, and a lot of times...
That's what I know.
You have to keep coming back with these things. I mean, it's, it's rarely ever, I think, that they hit the nail on the head and get them right the first time. It's usually something you have to keep coming back for.
What do you mean by tax credit?
It's through the state, which, which agency, what the state is doing that program? This is through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. We submitted our application last year, and it did not get approved. We did, however, get another site approved in North Carolina. And generally, you will only get one or two approved per developer if you even get one. So we decided to come back with it again this year, and we got it.
We had three or four in Alamoor or right adjacent to the city limits this year that had applied for that funding.
Right.
This gentleman's the one that was...
I think you had three last year and three again this year.
Does that mean these are, are what? Low income or...
These are affordable.
I don't know what word you used, but...
These are affordable to working families in Alamoor. They wouldn't, in a sense, be considered low income. They are kind of a mid-road, they're, they're not, you know, very low income, and they're not your conventional apartments. They're kind of mid, middle road.
Income-based.
Income-based, based on 60% of the median income.
Does that mean they're government-paid?
They're not government-paid, no. The tenants will be paying the rent and utilities.
But, but the money that he is seeking approval from, I think, if you'll go in a little bit...
That's correct.
You'll give out a little bit more information.
We, we got this approved from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. We put in an application to them. It's a, a long process, and with that, we were approved for the site to be built for financing from the agency. They, we will raise our equity with tax credits in order to be able to build something like this and to keep it clean, managed properly, to be able to charge a lower rent than what you would for, say, a conventional apartment. We will have debt on this project, but it raises part of our equity.
The funding for Central School Apartments came through the same...
I feel like we're being invaded.
It's basically the same thing as Central School Apartments.
Do we not ever get any apartments where they're just regular apartments?
Haven't had any market rate apartments built in recently that I have.
And, and we recently have built some of these in Mount Pleasant, which is just down the street, right off of 49. It's recently completed.
Very nice looking.
So you may see those. That is our project. The same architect will be designing this. I'm sorry.
How many are in the Mount Pleasant?
64 units. And it's been very well received by the community.
They're very nice.
Very nice.
Two-story top, two-story buildings.
Two-story buildings.
This one, too?
Mm-hmm. This will be the exact same design, same colors, same layout. We will work with the Planning Department and the ordinance to make sure that it reaches everything on your ordinance in particular.
Counsel, have any further questions?
Midway, mid, what is it, Midwood Drive or something back there? Ain't part of that road or gravel, gravel road?
Midwood.
Midwood. Is that, ain't part of that or gravel road?
It is.
Or a gravel. Okay. Hopefully, hopefully staff will consider paving that one, that paved portion, you know, with more...
With that gravel, with that gravel part, yeah, maybe put some pavement on it.
Further questions, Counsel? Entertained a motion.
So move to the preliminary request.
Motion by Councilmember Dry to move the, approve the submitted site plan.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 14, request approval of 2006 proprietary tax write-offs. You look, this looks like a very large number, as we've talked about it in the last couple years. It's due to the fact there's so many vehicles on this, and eventually we'll get to the point those vehicles will not be there with the new law, but there's a lot that looks like now, they're very small, $20, $30 because of those vehicles.
I want to make sure my name's on there.
A move approval.
And what you're approving is a required by law to be written off after 10 years. Motion by Councilmember Hall?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion?
Help me with one thing.
Yes, sir.
I thought when you didn't pay your taxes, the government took it over and sold it to pay the taxes.
We have every right to go through foreclosure for a tax lien and go through all that if Counsel decides that they want to proceed with that. And actually, some of these, we, we probably should look at, but it would have to be worked in conjunction with the county, because the county also would have a lien against it. I know the county looked at that a couple times and was going to pursue some of them, and I do not know where that stands at this time, because typically counties usually do that, I think, rather than cities.
So by writing it off, we're just saying, okay...
No, sir, no, sir. We can still try to get it. We just cannot, cannot keep it on our books. By law, we have to write it off our books by, for a 10-year period, after that 10-year period. But we'll continue to try to get the money, and hopefully we'll continue to get some of this money. Now, odds are, you'll probably never see any on any vehicle, but maybe some of the real property you will. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 15 is update on the Litchade Force Main Project. As you see in your agenda, and I'll ask Ms. Underwood to come forward if Counsel has any questions, this project is running longer than the contract calls for. At this point, we're not talking about any penalties or anything, because we need to let the contract run its course and see if they get it done, but it does look like it's going to go... going to go well past the deadline, and staff wants you to know that we may be looking at a couple of months extra at least before this is completed. Ms. Underwood?
Does anyone have any questions?
I just, well, the penalties, I mean, I know we've got to let it run its course, but then we have access, because we're talking 45 to 65 days behind schedule.
We have penalties in our contract, but at this point, I don't think it would be appropriate.
Oh, not now, until it's done.
Anything until after.
Right, until it's done, but we do have that recourse.
Yes.
We just wanted to let you know what the project status looked like, and that as a staff, our engineering firm, we've done what we could to push people along, but at some point, you know, contractors make decisions about their business, and they very well couldn't get it done, but we wanted to bring it to council's attention, because we didn't want the first time you all hear about it is when it is late. There's, you know, we go through a public bid process, you go through a vetting process, there's still no guarantees, and no guarantees that it will run late, but this is, this is the status, and just wanted to bring it to your attention now, and we'll see where it hits moving forward. We'll keep putting the pressure on them the best we can.
I guess follow-up would be if it was supposed to be completed by October 12th with final payment on November 11th. If we're talking 45 to 65 out, we're talking probably December 19th, probably, completion.
December?
December 12th, December 19th, something like that. And with final payment not until it's complete, or are we still final payment on November 11th?
No, not till completion.
Okay.
Is there a specific reason it's slow? Anything in particular, or?
Well, to be honest, we, contractor, through discussions we have on a weekly basis, he said he's just really overextended right now. He's got other projects going in other areas, and he's overextended himself.
It's not rock. It's not because of rock.
No, sir, they've encountered rock in places, but, you know, they, that's not the reasoning for their delay.
But if he, in fact, has said that to you, the burden of proof is on him, and he is basically saying, I know I'm going to end up paying it. I mean, he really has.
Counsel, have any further questions?
Wasn't this the one group that nobody had heard? Is this the group we said we didn't?
We were very hesitant.
Hesitant, yeah.
To take that bid, but he was low bid. And we had gotten nothing negative about it when we researched it.
Right, that's right.
There is a contract, there are consequences for being late, and I should add, we're going to do our best, our engineers are going to do our best to make sure that in the end we get the product, you know, that we paid for. We'll get the product we want, and then we'll deal with the other, the tardiness, if that's what it comes to be.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't rush through it or don't do what we're supposed to have. The worst so far has been satisfactory, yes.
So if they get the extra crew, conceivably, they could be close to completion by the 12th.
No.
About even close. But he needs two more crews.
Where is he on Stony Gap?
He's right above the bridge heading towards Albemarle, and then they've got a second crew that's been split back and forth up there at Trinity Place. So they've started at Trinity Place, working back towards Stony Gap also. But they still have work to do on the site, too. Skipping around, and, you know, they didn't have all the materials in and this and that, so it's been a, we went from having monthly updates to requesting weekly updates, and, you know, I think there was a, the first letter was sent out in June, another letter in August, and then we requested a letter from the owner of the company to verify that he was aware that his project manager was, you know, so far delayed, so.
Where are they housed?
In Ashboro.
Ashboro?
Mm-hmm.
Counsel, have any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank staff for letting us know. Number 16, consider rescheduling the January 1st and 15th city council meetings. Both of these fall on holidays, and typically, we go to the very next day on Tuesdays.
Send me.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 17 is your information. As Mr. Aldrich spoke earlier about our employee Christmas luncheon, again, will be held at the Waddell Center, and that is on the 13th, I believe. Counsel typically serves for that, if you recall.
I think we wear our Santa hat.
Coming around the table. You heard me earlier mention the Department of Transportation meeting on October 19th for the public. Michael is sending you some information around now, but there's also one for public officials from 3:30 until 4:30 that same day at Anderson Grove Church. Although you've seen most of the plans, if you would like to go out there and see them again and see, have any questions answered, they will be there from 3:30 to 4:30, and then the public session that night from 5:30 to 7:30.
Is this in the life center or in the main church?
It did not say.
Probably across, probably across the street in the life center, probably.
In my understanding, they will also have the plans all the way from Spalding Street all the way to the river there that night. So that's going to be a little more than we've even discussed before. Quick update, Waddell Center, the flooring. I give staff credit, they're doing an excellent job of patching and painting the walls. Now, we're still waiting on bids for removing the tile and the asbestos and the quotes for the floor. So we had hoped to have those night. We do not have them, so I guess it will be the next meeting. It's going to put us into a little bit of a time crunch, because we wanted to be able to move forward before now, but it is what it is. We're going to have to deal with it, and staff is trying to make arrangements now to make somewhere for them to practice their basketball until the season starts. I think we've got until January before the actual games start, but they typically start practicing in November. So we'll have to make some other arrangements for them to practice somewhere else. Hopefully, the schools or something like that.
So were we still waiting on a moisture, what was causing the moisture?
We had another moisture test, and we're waiting now on the asbestos, the tile and asbestos to be removed. Then they'll do a final check, which they think will be fine by the time that is removed.
Okay, okay.
It's gotten, the method of removing the asbestos is the debate right now, whether we can just grind it up, or if it's got to be bead blasted. If it's bead blasting, it's going to be much more expensive than grinding, so we're waiting to find out.
Of course.
I remind you about the Day of Caring Wednesday. Council members can, I think we're meeting here, who's back there? Is Judy back there?
8:30.
At 8:30 here, we're going to meet here and go out and do some, I think 13 different customers, houses we're going to visit that morning. Anyone in council that can, we would ensure enjoy the help. Back when we started our strategic plan update, we talked about when we did the school session, wanting to meet with the school board. Now, we have that plan back now. Do we want to offer, or see if the school board will meet with us in a, not a structured meeting, just to sit down and discuss the future of our schools, what our plan revealed, and see how they respond? Do we want to do that?
Well, they had in the paper that they wanted to meet with us.
Yeah.
That's what they put in the paper the other day.
That would be good, then. Is counsel good with us trying to arrange a date to do that?
Yes, absolutely.
Could you, when you talk with anybody, get two dates or three?
Yes.
As many of us as possible could be there?
Right.
Good idea.
Okay. Mr. Ferrish, will you reach out to them and see what kind of dates they have available?
I'll do it.
I think they meet tomorrow night, so if you could reach out in the morning, maybe the superintendent could ask them tomorrow night. I gave you a little bit of information tonight on commercial maintenance code. All of you have talked about that several times in the past. This is nothing new. It's the same thing you had before. I just gave you the paperwork again, so you could review it. If you decide you want to move forward with that, we need to talk about that at some point, but if you'll review that and be prepared at the next meeting or two, there's no rush, but we, everybody has talked about, we want to talk about it again, so let's do that.
This is the whole thing?
That's it. Mr. Ferrish?
I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Townsend?
Just one reminder, I think we got an email from somebody with Central School.
Yeah.
Are we supposed to?
Wednesday morning.
Meet at Wednesday morning at?
7:15.
7:15. Okay, the YMCAPV, the Walter Kids School.
Walter School, if you want to participate, yes.
What's up?
Ms. Hughes?
Just a comment, then I noticed the banners downtown. New banners with bright red backgrounds look awesome, very eye-catching, so I appreciate staff's work on that.
That's it.
Mr. Aldrich?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Hall?
I had some folks here from out of town, and they even acknowledged, as ever the weekend, they acknowledged the new banners. Just an attaboy during, from the Electric City's mailing that just came out in the last week or two. Albemarle's got front and center, new partnership provides more ways to pay in Albemarle, so if you didn't see that, it's in the public power announcement. So attaboy there. Attaboy to Mark Donham with us being in the, was it the North County Business, Charlotte Business Journal? I mean, we've got an article there. And somebody brought to my attention page 28A in yesterday's Charlotte Observer about something that may or may not come to fruition in the General Assembly when they go this week, and that is that House bill that I think we need to continue to watch, 577. So there is talk that they're going to go up and come back home. There's talk that they may be up there for a couple of weeks, which then puts a lot of, anybody that, any organization, for instance, Child Fatality Task Force cannot meet when they're in session, and we've got meetings scheduled next week, so they may be canceled because they may still be in session next week. And the other thing is that Public Power Week is all week. Our part is tomorrow, but if you come up here, there'll be things going on, there'll be things going on, and it's in your bag. If you found your bag, there's a little scheduling events in there all week. That's all, thanks.
Mr. Dry?
Yes, your honor.
Mr. Bramlett?
Totally have a thing, except last week, why were so many cars parked on the Pfeiffer property down here?
I had a feeling it was people going to the public.
Public house.
Over at Five Point Place.
Was it just one day? Because I thought I rode by there a couple of times, and it looked like.
I think they had a, they had a soft opening this weekend.
Friday, sir.
It's already Friday, my understanding, so.
Okay, so it was a couple of months.
Speaking of banners, my grandson wanted to know why some of them read up and some of them read down. I couldn't answer that. We just recently cleared up that big junkyard down there. It's coming back. I don't know if you've ridden by that lately.
Old Charlotte Road.
There's a lot of junk, junk cars in that old Charlotte Road, former junkyard.
Ah, where's Kevin? Kevin's just shaking his head.
He's shaking his head, he'll check it.
And I'll tell you what, we got a lot of junkyards in town. It isn't just that one, but we've got them all, several of them. Maybe we ought to just give Kevin a list. What defines a junkyard? Is it five unused cars?
In the zone it's in, because you can't have a zone, you can't have some in certain zones with screening and other.
You have it in heavy industrial, I know, but.
Yeah, so there are a few that are.
But my point's made, that's all. Golf carts, are they going to be allowed to just sit in people's yards? Or what are we going to do? Is there going to be any control over how they're going to proliferate in the neighborhood? And lastly, I thank you for asking about the schools, because I had planned to be there tomorrow to tell them exactly what to do, and now I won't do that. I'll share that with you. Thank you.
Anyone in the audience have anything to bring for counsel? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Filled.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.